Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough Board of Education Business Meeting. The date is Thursday, August 15, 2024. Can we call the attendance, please?
Yes. Mr. Callaher?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Ms. Mr. Pini?
Here.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
And Ms. Trupini Huff?
Here.
Perfect, thank you. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 4.0 is approval of the July 18 2024 business meeting minutes. So if there are no objections, it will approve the minutes.
I object.
Agenda item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I do have one adjustment I'd like to include under agenda item. Agenda item 11.3, sorry. I would like to add an 11.3.8, which would be the fall sport coaches. So do I have motion?
Second.
Oh. In second, perfect, thank you. So we have a first and we have a second to add, to amend the agenda to add 11.3.8, which is the fall sport coaches. All in favor? And it's unanimous, thank you. All right. Agenda item 6.0 is a superintendent's report, so I'll turn that over to Diane.
Great, good evening, everyone. Excited to be here tonight. We are gearing up for back to school. In less than two weeks, we will be welcoming our students back, and we're really excited about that. Just wanted to provide you with some updates of what's been happening since we last met in July. So first off, we have some amazing work that has been happening in our buildings to prepare them for return. We are so fortunate to have year-round staff in several different departments that help us to be ready to greet students in August. And yesterday, we actually had a summer cookout to recognize those folks. We do that every year on an annual basis. Our central office leadership team helps with all of the cooking, and it is just wonderful to be able to acknowledge that staff. As I said to all of them yesterday, they are the least visible individuals in the district, but without them, we really wouldn't be able to move forward. So it was really nice to be able to just come together for food and for, you know, some low-level recognition. But I think it's really important for every member of our organization to know that we see them. Last week, we held our leadership retreat for two days for our leadership team with a focus on moving action plans forward for the coming year and setting goals for our work. That was a great time. We've got, you know, some new members of our team, and it's always nice to be able to come together and have some team building and frame things so that we're aligned and moving in the same direction. So that was a really important time for our team. Our new staff orientation is coming up next Wednesday, and we will also hold a new staff symposium opportunity on Thursday for those people who are interested in attending. Katie Vitro has been heading that up for us so that as new staff come onboard, they feel like they are knowledgeable about, you know, some of the key aspects of the work here in Scarborough. Opening days for staff are coming right up on Monday, August 26, and Tuesday, August 27. Our district-level day will be August 27. A couple of years ago, when we moved to the two-day model for professional development for staff, some of the feedback that we got from staff was that they really preferred to have a school-based day the first day and district opening the second day. And certainly having been a classroom teacher, I can appreciate that, you know, top of mind is, you know, who are the students in your class? Are your things organized? Are you set up versus coming to a district breakfast and an opening? So we had made that shift a couple of years ago, and that really has been a welcome one. So I would just extend this as an invitation to the board if you'd like to join us for our district opening on the 27th. That will be in the auditorium at the high school at 8:00 a.m., and we have a fabulous guest speaker. She is a national speaker and author. Her name is Jill Siler, and she's already been working with our leadership team, and we're excited for her to bring her messaging to the staff. Also, coming up, as we gear up for back to school, our by-appointment days for kindergarten through fifth-grade families will be happening on August 28 and 29. So hopefully, folks should have that information now and know when their appointments are and feeling really excited to get to know their child's teacher. The first day for grade six and grade nine will happen on Wednesday, the 28th, and on Thursday, the 29th, will be the first school day for grades six through 12. And then when we come back from the Labor Day weekend, all of our students will be in session. So we're really excited because, again, not that it isn't exciting to do all the work and planning in the summer, but it certainly is a very different job for us in the summer than it is in the school year. You know, we're here for students, and so it seems like a different place when we don't have kids around. So we're excited for that. Also, wanted to just share out with you at a very high level this evening, the articulation of work as we defined it for our leadership council last week. As you know, all of our schools set action plans and goals for their work during the year. And so in terms of the right timing for this, this is generally something that is included as part of our leadership retreat so that we can all be aligned in a vertical way, and then schools have the ability to go back and do some planning with their own school teams about, you know, what does that mean for them at the school level? So articulation of these goals with defined action steps and measurable outcomes is something that will happen at the school level. But, you know, I will not read those things word for word, but I don't think that there are anything, there's nothing on that list that should be a surprise. We have been engaging in some really important work, and we know that as we do that, those are multi-year plans and things that take time. So if you take a look up there, you'll see that our first goal is really around developing and implementing a plan that addresses our facility constraints relative to community growth and student programming. So, you know, some of you might say, oh, that means addressing the primary school and the middle school. And that is partially a yes, but I think it is also just as important for our schools like Wentworth and the high school for us to kind of keep our eye on the apple and make sure that the way in which our facilities are organized and how we're using our spaces really match what our student needs are. Our second goal is around refining and monitoring a multi-tiered system of support, ensuring equitable access to resources so that we can make sure that we're really attending to maximizing academic growth and personal well-being for each and every one of our students. We've been working on our MTSS plans over time, and I think we're really wanting to make sure that we have opportunities at all levels that are equitable. And so our schools will be working on that. And then our last goal, again, is around, you know, making sure that we're fostering a welcoming and inclusive school environment by prioritizing a social-emotional learning approach and looking through that with a DEI lens. So last year was the first year for some really important work at our K-8 with the implementation of our lineup and, oh my gosh, why am I drawing a blank?
Ruler.
Ruler, thank you. Curriculums, and so, you know, that was just year one of that work. And so we'll be moving that work forward, and we have been having really specific conversations about what is that next step to take with diversity, equity, and inclusion as it relates to different, you know, at the school level and looking at equity teams and how can we start disaggregating some data around, you know, what things are looking like for our students? So we're really excited to be able to move that work forward, and we'll be reporting back to you with more detail as the year unfolds. Also, wanted to provide the community this evening just an update on our track. This was a question that came forward, and we understand that we did get approval through referendum for an updated turf and track, I guess, three years ago now. And at the time, we did move forward on the turf component, but what I've outlined for you here, and again, many thanks to Kate Bolton, who's really been helping us with some of this work in terms of being the connection point for this piece. There really are two reasons why we have not yet been able to move forward with the track renovation. The first is around strategic facilities planning. Those of you who have been on the board probably recall that in 2022, the board had released information about deferring the track because there was some strategic planning happening about where a potential land might be if there was a decision to build another school facility. The turf component of that was done during that time because the vendor was very clear with us that the turf components could actually be reused in a different location. So we could have rolled it right up and brought it somewhere else if we felt like there was a need to do that. And then in the winter of 2023, the building steering committee at the time determined that the location of our athletic complex would not be sufficient for any proposed building project. And after that decision was made, our district team mobilized to try to get on a schedule for track renovation. And, you know, the desire was to do that in the summer of 2023. And that brings us to number two, which is another, the other reason why this has not yet come to fruition, which is there is a very highly competitive market for this type of specialized construction. And so we issued an RFP in the spring of 2023, and there were only two vendors in our region who qualified to provide this type of specialized work, both of whom were already committed for work in 2023. And as you know, Shannon and I talked about this earlier this week. We live in New England, and so unfortunately, we don't have 12 months in a year for this type of work to be done. And so, you know, the combination of only two vendors who can do the work, and then we can only really get the work done four months of the year, you know, didn't bode well for us. We started the outreach process again in the fall of 2023, so like, we were just like really hot on that and faced the same situation with the vendors already being committed for this spring, the spring of 2024. So they were not able to meet our timeline schedule. And so, you know, again, we are committed to that track renovation, and the project team continues to meet with the goal of securing a timeline for the spring of 2025. So it certainly isn't the situation that we would like to find ourselves in. And I guess if anyone is looking to start a new business, you might want to, like, learn how to install turf and track fields because it seems like there's not a lot of competition out there. And that's, I have one more piece. And the other piece, this is to share with you this evening. This spring, the Scarborough Education Association, the SEA, and central office leadership had worked on this document that you see here. The SEA came to us wanting to partner on this project in an effort to really better inform parents about ways in which they can support their children's education at school and support the educators that work with their students. And so you'll see here, there's, you know, some outlines around communication, collaboration, and how collectively we can grow that community culture. And so at the time that this came to completion in the spring, it had been agreed upon that we would roll that out, if you will, at the start of the school year, and that is where we are. So that is why I am sharing it with you this evening. We are making these into posters, and these will be visible in office areas of each of the schools where parents convene. We'll also make sure that we include this in our first district newsletter so, you know, parents understand that we have a real interest in having a genuine partnership with them here at school.
Very good, thank you, Diane. Are there any questions for Diane? I have two. The track and turf, can we open? I'm saying this without too much of an understanding of the RFP process. Can we open the RFP up nationally and solicit bids from outside of the region? I'm staring Kate down.
Kate, would you like to speak to that? Would you like to come to the podium?
I mean, I understand we would likely need to, you know, secure housing of some sort. There's additional costs. I just wonder if the additional cost, the cost we would pay to bring in a crew from out of the area might offset the super-specialized cost that's here and perhaps they're about even, and we can get the work done a little bit faster.
It's a good question. There's no reason why a vendor outside of our region couldn't bid on an RFP. In practice, what generally happens is that folks will mobilize in areas where they feel that it's easy for them to do the work. So that's why you end up having vendors from New England be interested in work here. One of the things that didn't really come out in this, in this little report that Diane has given is the, well, we did talk about the specialized nature of the work. One of the big things that that has been getting in the way is the backlog of work that these folks have because of the pandemic, where they may have had, they may have had a project that was scheduled for 2020 or 2021 that was deferred, and they'd already made promises to those folks. And so there basically is a line at the toll booth, if you will. So I'm not sure whether the national vendors, you know, whether vendors across the country wouldn't be in that same kind of situation. With that said, you know, as anyone can bid, we have worked through co-ops and reached out to partners across the country. It's really more of a practical consideration for the vendors themselves, where they're looking for work where, you know, their workers are close to home. It's not really the type of industry where people are used to traveling and spending time away from their homes. I will say that we have one vendor who is very enthusiastic. It's the same vendor who put in the turf. They've been super loyal to us through the whole process, doing their utmost to try and make this work. And we're continuing to talk with them. Their difficulty has been the subcontractors because they need somebody to actually do the site work. That's not their job, and they subcontract that out, and they do the specialty surfaces. So that was the biggest difficulty, you know, not to get too far in the weeds, but that was the biggest difficulty this last spring, was that they reached out to several different subcontractors, and those folks were all super busy as well. But, you know, I'm a very optimistic person. I think you know that I always come to work expecting things to work out well. And we're going to keep after it. We're going to get it done, absolutely.
Thank you. My second is more of a comment. This, this expectations that you've put together, not you, Diane, but you, the leadership group in the SEA, I think this is a really great document. And I wonder if, in addition to the newsletter and the posters, I wonder if this can go in the younger kids. I, maybe I'm showing my age. I presume we still send out folders?
Yes.
Do we still send out?
Yeah, we do.
Can we, can we print these out and put them in folders? And maybe for the older kids, we put it on the family ID, the site where we do our forms now for the, for the older kids so that they can access it, so everybody can access it, even if they're not in your buildings?
Yeah, those are great suggestions. The other place that I didn't mention that these are also going to live are going to be in the digital handbooks on the website.
Perfect.
So we're really just trying to blanket that information in multiple places. So, you know, I think that your suggestions are also great ones for us to consider.
Perfect. Very good. Are there any other questions or thoughts for Diane?
All right, thank you.
Oh, did you raise your hand?
Oh, sorry.
Pardon me.
It's like an option.
All right, agenda item 7.0 is a chair's report. Mine is really brief today. We are in the summer months coming out. As Diane mentioned, the district reopening is coming soon, and we do wish everyone a good first staff day back at school. When we meet again, school will actually already be in. So for the parents listening, you know, we wish them a happy start to the school year as well. It seems unbelievable that we're here already. The second thing I had is we do have one open seat on the school board. That seat is due to resignation, and it is set to expire in, or not, I guess it's expired, to be up, to be done. The term is up in June of 2026. So by the time they, they would come on in November, and the person would serve until June. So if anyone is interested in a school board seat, the nomination papers are available in Town Hall. You can go by and pick them up. They are due back with your signatures by the first Wednesday in September, which is the 4th. Close of business on the 4th. All right, if you, if anybody is thinking about it and has questions about some important things to consider as you're looking at these seats is the time commitment, the, the work that's being done, what it's like to be an elected official. I'm sure, I mean,
The money.
I'm going to speak to, yes, the, the pay. I'm going to speak to every, I'm sure everyone up here is happy to speak to anyone who's, who has questions. So we would love to, we would love to talk with you. And then the third thing I have is that the committee, the committee's report, the board committee work has, you know, takes a pause over the summer as well for those who aren't as familiar with our process. So they don't meet as much. There's a couple that you will hear from. Negotiations is still ongoing. You'll hear from them. And then policy is still pretty, pretty active. But the rest kind of take a break in the summer. So we will be getting started up as well now that the, the school year is back, back in session. And that's all, that's all I have. All right, agenda item 9.0, our, 8.0, our committee reports. So we will start with communications.
All right, so we are, we, our next meeting is to be determined, but right now, we're just working on prioritizing some tasks, calendar development, and general planning and organization. We're working to put together a calendar. The track update, I don't think I need to reiterate, but Kate had written an email to us, and it was really a lot of great information. So I believe the communications committee will take that up and try to get it out to the wider community as well. That's all the squishy words are on there, but. Yeah, that's pretty much it. We're trying to really prioritize how we, what, what we're going to do and not be so chaotic. Some learning curves in there last, last year with what we can take on.
Thank you. Any comments for Julian? All right, curriculum and finance back to back.
Yep, well, we have not met as a curriculum committee, so that is still being determined. So I have no updates for you currently. But I imagine it'll be happening soon enough because school's about to start. So right now, I'm sure everybody's really busy right now, making sure that everything's going to go smoothly at the start of the school year, so. And then same, we have not met as a finance committee yet. Actually, I am going to send Kate something tonight after our workshop this afternoon, this evening with Steve, and came up with a pretty good topic to have an overview of. EDU 279, did I get that right?
Yes.
And I understand that Alyssa's going to be meeting with Kate on Friday, so she's going to get a review of, of some of the procedural things before we get started. I'm excited to get back to our meetings.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions for Jenna about curriculum or finance? Freila, you're next with DEI.
The DEI committee's been on break. Our next meeting is September 10, from 6:00 to 7:30.
So they don't meet as much. There's a couple that you will hear from. Negotiations is still ongoing. You'll hear from them. And then policy is still pretty, pretty active. But the rest kind of take a break in the summer. So we will be getting started up as well now that the, the school year is back, back in session. And that's all, that's all I have. All right, agenda item 9.0 or 8.0, our committee reports. So we will start with communications.
All right, so we are, we, our next meeting is to be determined, but right now we're just working on prioritizing some tasks, calendar development and general planning and organization. We're working to put together a calendar. The track update, I don't think I need to reiterate, but Kate had written an email to us and it was really a lot of great information. So I believe the communications committee will take that up and try to get it out to the wider community as well. That's all the squishy words are on there, but yeah, that's pretty much it. We're trying to really prioritize how we, what, what we're going to do and not be so chaotic. Some learning curves in there last, last year with what we can take on.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments for Jillian? All right, curriculum and finance back to back.
Yep. Well, we have not met as a curriculum committee, so that is still being determined. So I have no updates for you currently. But I imagine it'll be happening soon enough because school's about to start. So right now I'm sure everybody's really busy right now, making sure that everything's going to go smoothly at the start of the school year, so. And then same, we have not met as a finance committee yet. Actually, I am going to send Kate something tonight after our workshop this afternoon, this evening with Steve. And came up with a pretty good topic to have an overview of. EDU 279, did I get that right?
Yes.
And I understand that Alyssa's going to be meeting with Kate on Friday. So she's going to get a review of, of some of the procedural things before we get started. So I'm excited to get back to our meetings.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for Jenna about curriculum or finance? Freila, you're next with DEI.
The DEI committee's been on break. Our next meeting is September 10th from 6:00 to 7:30. Traditionally, we meet in the AV room at the high school and it's also a hybrid meeting, so it's available online. Our membership subcommittee work has not continued, but will continue over the, over the summer. We're going to be looking for new committee members. Definitely have some spots to open up and talk about that. But we're looking forward to getting back at it.
And you have the next two, so you just want to carry on?
Keep rolling. Negotiations are ongoing. We had two contacts, two contracts that are, which I said contacts in here, so it should be contracts, are close to completion. We have ongoing discussions on the third contract. I'm fairly optimistic that things are moving along the way they should. So we have meetings on the calendar through September and hopefully will be done soon.
Maybe one more.
Policy committee. A lot going on. We have the second reading of BDG School Attorney Legal Services. You will see that at our next meeting on September 5th. Because it went through committee this week, so it wasn't in time to get on this agenda. We're going through the Title IX policies. There was a significant change in Title IX legislation at the federal level. And we're bringing our policies into compliance with, in line with those changes. And so we've gotten through three of them, which again, you will see at our next meeting. Because we got through them this week. We're continuing to move through that. That's sort of taken our front seat because we need those. Those are really very important policies in terms of our like legal compliance. And so we need to get them into compliance now. We'll get that done and then we'll go back to our regularly scheduled programming, which includes transportation. We're taking a pretty deep look at the cellular technology, some electronic devices at schools K through 12, which I know there's a lot of interest in. And then after we move through that, we're going to go back to moving through the B suite of policies to get those updated with the goal of getting any policy that has not been looked at prior to 2020, we reviewed and updated. Our next meeting is September 5th at 5:30 to 6:30. That's the next board meeting, business meeting for the board. And it's hybrid and in person at the school board conference room. No, I'm going to do three meetings back to back. Doing three meetings back to back. No, it starts at 3:00.
Oh.
3:30. But yes, so we will be, lots of meetings are happening on September 5th. It'll be a very meeting heavy day. It might be fried.
Have lots of updates.
Yeah, I should have lots of updates, I hope. Any questions about any of those?
Any questions or thoughts for Freila, comments for her? All right, long range planning.
We are working on, or I'm going to be emailing out to organize our first meeting and looking forward to looking at the facility needs as we continue to work on our building solution.
Speaking of building solution.
Yeah, so the, the communications committee that is actively working on various projects through the summer is going to be at Summerfest tomorrow. And then of course, we are working on a phase two. So that is where we are right now. And you're going to read that next, right? Almost next.
Yeah, almost next.
Okay. So yeah, catch them at Summerfest tomorrow.
Any questions on that? We'll talk about the phase two separately. But any questions on Summerfest or the comms committee for them? Any liaison reports? Anything from town council or?
Reminder, this is not really legislative, but it's kind of, we, we are going to be reviewing some, I forget what it's called, but the changes to the MSMA.
Or the proposed regulations.
Proposed regulations. Resolutions, is it? And would you, it was important to review them and come with your thoughts next meeting to discuss them. Otherwise, you're going to be stuck with my thoughts, which is not as we discussed the board's thoughts. So please take a chance to look through them. I know they're really, really dense. But it's important to make sure people have questions and we have a good discussion about what you want me to do because I'm going to take my marching orders from this group. And if I don't have any, that makes it harder for me to figure out what you always want me to do.
I have a quick one, my, my first and last for the community center. The community center is done, meeting. So I came on and, and I guess it was fortuitous timing. I don't know. But they have written their final report and they are complete, they've completed their work. They are going to present their findings to the town council next Wednesday. They have a workshop at 5:30. And so they will present what they found. If you've not seen online, on Facebook, I know it's on Facebook. I'm sure it's on the website, the town council website somewhere. They've got, for lack of a better word, renderings of the building. It's where their proposed site is. If you've not seen it, it's right near Wentworth, the Wentworth School. So we're to hear more about that next Wednesday. If you're interested in hearing about that and attending the meeting, that would be, that would be the time to do so. So that will, effective, I guess, Wednesday, that will come off of our list of liaisons roles. Yeah, that was the fastest I've ever served on anything. Yeah. All right, and any other liaison reports?
I was just going to say about the community center, really mostly from the town council perspective. And they're working on the phase two doc as well. So that's it right now.
Thank you. All right, agenda item 10.0 is general public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to make public comment about something that's not on the agenda? Just double check online. Is there anybody online? The feed is not working this evening.
Oh.
Thank you. Okay. All right, seeing none in here, I will close general public comment. 11.0 is new business. 11.1 is the major capital applications for middle school, Blue Point School, Eight Corners School and Pleasant Hill School. So I will turn this over to Diane to tee up.
Yeah, so thank you for that, Shannon. We have been very busy this summer, working on updating our four applications for state funded projects for those members of the public who may not be aware. This is the first time that state funding has opened since 2017. Scarborough did not rate very highly in, during that time. And now that these have reopened, they reopened in May and all of the applications are due on August 30th. We felt like it was really important for us to do our due diligence and to reapply to see how we might fare with the state funding this round. I think going into the process, the lead at the DOE communicated to us this was, was really just updating our application. And I would say that his assumption of that could not have been understated anymore because we have found ourselves spending countless hours on these updates, if you will. And, and that has consumed not just time, not just my time, but certainly Kate and Todd Jepson. And, you know, Ray has come on and learned a lot about where we are with the buildings of Scarborough in, in a little bit over a month, that he's been here. And we also have had a lot of due diligence on the part of our building leaders. And we met several times to really make sure that there was the most up to date information in each of those applications, which you should have received in your packet. Part of the requirement is that boards do vote for us to be able to submit the applications. So with a successful vote this evening, what we will look to do is we will follow the expectations as laid out, which include submitting electronic copies of our applications as well as a paper copy. What I did not include in your board packet was all of the appendices and supporting documents because I felt like you probably didn't need that level of detail. But if you are interested in knowing what type of information will be included in the appendices, that will include all of our latest indoor air quality reports, our CIP work that we've conducted across the affected schools from 2017 to the current time so that they can see what we've, what we have attended to. We will be submitting all of our roofing histories so that they know the work that we've done there. We will submit the long range facilities plan, although that is a little bit dated at this point and a piece of work that I would love to see the long range facilities committee update. We will include our 2023 enrollment study and all of our building floor plans. So the other piece that I wanted to mention this evening is that although all of these applications are due by August 30th, there will not be notification to districts made until next June of 2025. So what they will do is they will take this year and they have a school visiting team. And that team will go out and literally visit and score using an assessment tool every school that applied for funding. And then we'll receive our scores and we'll see where we fare. Again, we're doing our due diligence as I, I hope when you read, you were like, oh my goodness, there's so much detail in here. Because I believe there is. And certainly we're really looking forward to how we score. And one other point that I would make is there is a hold harmless provision as part of the building application. So although we need to be very upfront with the state about the work that we've done to improve our schools since our first application in 2017, we do not lose points for, you know, trying to correct things. They, they ask that information very clearly so that they're not just looking at the way our schools look today, but acknowledging that, you know, that, that we have spent time, effort, energy and local tax dollars to try to improve our schools to the highest extent possible.
Okay. First, do we have a motion to approve the major capital applications for the middle school, Blue Point School, Eight Corners School and Pleasant Hill School?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, my first and the second. Any discussion, any questions, discussion for Diane?
Once funding, kind of the points are assigned and we have our list, presumably most, a lot of towns and, towns and cities in the state are going to be applying. What, how many get funding?
So that really depends on like, what is that bucket of dollars that the state has for that? If I were to look at the list from 2017, there are nine projects since 2017 that were funded out of a total of right around 70 schools.
Okay. Is it fully funded or percentage funded based on how much money they?
Generally, when a project receives state funding, it is full funding for that school, right? Like there is a, a project in a community nearby to us right now that is not fully state funded. But that is because that district is choosing to address some other building issues at the same time that they're addressing an issue that they had applied for state funding for.
Okay, thank you.
This was the mechanism with which we funded the junior high a number of years ago. Is that correct?
Yep, for the 1996 project.
So when I hear a lot of discussion about how we had a state, we've gotten state funding for schools, this is the way that we did it.
Correct.
And so this is the only mechanism we have available to us to ask the state to pay for the school building. When we're asked that, because I know, I have been asked, I know we have been asked, if we've explored every possible avenue to get funding for, to build, to address our, the needs at our primary schools and our middle school, this is the only avenue we have. So if we don't do this, then we aren't, we aren't even in contention for this money.
Correct.
And our highest, our, our most critically needed, rated, it's like opposite. Like you don't want to be rated low on the scale because it means your school's in really, really bad shape. But our, our worst school or our highest on the list school was Eight Corners last time.
I believe so, yes.
And it was in the high twenties, almost like a little under 30.
I think it was 32. It was number 32.
32. So if nine of those projects are in the works, there might be 20.
One project's ahead of us. And again, those are assumptions that we're making.
Because things can move.
Right? In terms of like, if none of those schools that were ahead of us came up with their own local solutions, right? Like it's hard to determine all of that.
And things could shift depending on sort of, on things that have been discovered since 2017, some environmental hazards. Something that might become a critical need immediately and bring a school up more quickly than.
Right. Like there's not just an assumption that everybody moves up nine.
Correct.
Does it hurt us to have had a state project prior? Does it, do we lose any? Okay. No.
With us applying as the three primary schools, but not yet having a solution as the, as a phase two, the building solution kind of is moving forward. Do we have any insight on to how that would be addressed if one of the three primaries were to be chosen for?
I, I think.
I trailed off, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, I think it's hard for us to kind of, you know, foresee the future or what that might look like. I think, you know, we're certainly going to get into the phase two plan for our local work that we've been doing here. And again, I don't think that, it's my understanding that there's not an assumption that we would be seeking referendum in June. And so we would be getting information about our status prior to a local referendum happening.
Okay, I'll just finish up. First off, the amount of, the amount of work that has gone into these is pretty unbelievable. So thank you to everyone on the team who has worked. These are, I, I guess in my mind, I was thinking this was going to be a like five pager. And when I started opening these and reading these, and there are 19 pages and 20 pages and 17 pages. And the amount of information in here is really, really important for not only, I think, this board to know, but really for the community to know. And so I'm interested in potentially sharing these. I just don't know if, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's, you know, you know, there's nothing disclosed in the application that says, you know, we're sworn to secrecy. I mean, I think this is a mirror reflection of the status of our schools.
Right. And this is, because when you start, for any, for, I know the community hasn't seen these yet. And when you start getting in here and you start reading about what's appropriate and what's necessary to educate our students and where we're lacking, it's pretty eye opening, even for me who's been very heavily involved in this work for years. To go down an entire chart and see no, that nothing is acceptable in the school is pretty telling. And that's the case for every single application that I looked at. And so I think that this is something that would be really good for the community as a whole to read.
Fair enough.
All right, so we have a first and a second wave of discussion. All in favor of approving the major capital applications for the middle school, for Blue Point School, Eight Corners School and Pleasant Hill School? And it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Agenda item 11.2 is the first reading of the school building advisory committee phase two charge. So the document is in, yeah, the document is in everyone's agenda packet. What I would like to do is tee it up first and then I would like to take public comment. And then we'll, we'll get into our business with it. Oh, when I first, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. Was there anybody who was wishing to make public comment on the major capital applications? Thank you. Okay. Now we'll get back into this. So I would like to tee it up first. So this work was done over very many hours. Alyssa, Gillian, myself, Diane, Tom Hall, Nick, Councilor McGee and Councilor Seither all worked together on this. And the idea was, we had phase two that we, we completed. Now how do we move forward? And so some of the major things that we really discussed. And so some of the major things that we really discussed was the size of the committee, given we would, that we would be bringing on a consultant at this stage. Um, we discussed very heavily the referendum date that Diane alluded to. We discussed what we thought um, that timeline would look like and um, where, where the, where we, what we wanted this committee to focus on. So I'm not going to read it word for word because everyone has it. But essentially what we're, what we came up with is that the phase two work would work with the consultant and continue the work. So if you remember where phase one left off, they left off with four proposed solutions that they came to the table with. They asked, uh, they asked to carry forward all four. We um, we voted to accept that. Town council voted to accept that. And so now we need a consultant to help kind of vet those out to the best of their ability to see what the committee believes would be the best option to bring forward for referendum. Um, so the committees, one of the first things that we would have this committee do is select um, the consultant. So they would be involved in that work, um, the selection work. They would also be involved with selecting um, what we've titled deliverables. So site selection, space needs analysis. Um, there, you'll notice on number three, there's a semi-permanent modular um, verbiage for number three under deliverables. Um, we did receive some feedback from someone on the phase one committee asking us to revamp that wording. Um, and so that's something we can consider um, when we are voting. But let me tell you what the um, question was, or the suggestion was. The suggestion was to change it from um, semi-permanent modulators to change the wording to prefab modular solution. So everywhere you see that in there would, it would be instead of semi-permanent modular would be pref- prefab um, modular solution. So that's one, the schematic design, which is the con- the concept, and then a probable cost statement, which would be your finance. Right? And then your operating cost is um, not just looking at um, what it would cost for us to build a solution, but what is that anticipated long-term impact? So um, those are the, those are the deliverables. Um, we expect, of course, the public to be involved in this process. We do um, expect the committee to check in with both bodies um, at four times throughout the year. That's further down in the document. But we have four dates set aside. Two of them are town council meetings, two of them are school board meetings. The expectation is that we would attend um, the town council meetings and the town councillors are invited to attend ours, you know, vice versa. But two oper- four opportunities for the community to really touch point with us and with the community and tell us where they're at in the process. Um, we also had, laid an expectation down that we would incorporate um, the expertise of our staff. Because as you remember, phase one, really um, the school staff wasn't as involved in that process. And so there's that expectation this time. Um, the membership, so I, I mentioned at the start of this, one of the things we really discussed was what the membership should look like. Um, one of the concerns is that as you bring a consultant on, how much, how many people should be in the room when you have a, someone you're paying to be there to help drive the process? So the phase one, when we ended phase one work, we were roughly at fifty-ish participants, fifty-ish um, members. Um, without knowing how many wanted to come back and if they all did or didn't, um, we weren't sure. We had heard some mixed things. What we decided to do um, was suggest nineteen members. So of the, of the phase one committee, the five subcommittee chairs. So the subcommittees are enrollment, benchmarking, finance, infrastructure and communication. Those five chairs would automatically come to phase two work. Four members of the leadership team. So um, the leadership team was the chair, the vice chair. Um, we had a, a secretary and then we had a, a few other members that were non-elected officials. So four of them will come to phase two. We will open up an application process for three residents at large and then three alternate members. So six more that would be invited to apply to be on the committee. And then there will be the two members of the town council and the two members of the board. So that's how we get to the nineteen. Um, alternate members are expected to attend meetings just as other members. Um, they are privy to all information. We would utilize their vote in the event that a member is absent. All right. Um, we would uh, establish what we would, what we are calling an application committee. Um, the, this would be comprised of the BOE members, the council members, the town manager. Diane is the superintendent and the chair from the phase one committee. So phase one committee chair was Peter Hayes. So he would now sit on this um, application prop- committee. And that committee would determine based on um, applications received. Um, they would, they would select based on the application they received and the criteria demonstrated who would sit on phase two. Um, the second big thing was up for discussion. Um, let me back up one second. Uh, the reason the membership is a little bit different is because if you recall in phase one, we opened it to anybody who was interested in serving. So this deviates from the way we sat phase one. This is a deviation. All right. The referendum timeline was the second big piece. Um, we, I, I don't think it's any secret that we all probably feel the pressure to get something done. Um, the concern is that if we had tried to put in a June 2024 referendum date, we were already pushing up against the clock. Because if you, you know, the process to get, you know, town council has to vote on what goes to referendum. And to get that done, that has to get in front of them by April. So when you start backing up, when we, by the time we seat a committee and we select a consultant, we're already down the road pretty far um, to April. And we, we haven't even started doing anything yet. So um, in light of that, we decided to just move it back to November of 2025. So what would happen is this committee will be sat by September. Um, the, we can start, um, we, the, when I say we, it's really, it's really our central office staff and Kate. We can start a RFP process for the consultant. So all of that can get started while the committee is being sat. So that when the committee is sat, we're ready to go with consultant selection. And then they can get to work right away because the deliverable for a final solution is June 30th. All right. You can see the forward process checkpoint dates. It's November. Um, that's likely a shorter update. November is ju- you know, not too far away. That is more of a where are they at in the process of selecting members? Um, where are they at in um, the process of selecting consultant, things like that? You know, more logistical update. Then there's a January, March and May updates. Um, we have um, same officers, the chair, the vice chair, recording secretary. Those will be determined from the committee members by its members. Um, quorum and voting, quorum will be ten members occur- that attend. Um, and meeting and records, they, the same responsibility that we have as a board will, will move through to the committee, meaning that they will record the meetings. They will allow for remote promote, participation. The public isn't expected to participate. Um, we will follow, they'll follow Robert's rules. Everything the same is, is how we conduct our meetings. And then the last piece, because we did um, deti- determine that the smaller membership in phase two is important given the consultant work, um, we didn't want anybody to feel that they couldn't serve. If, if they wanted to be a part of this phase, but they weren't selected for the committee, we didn't want them to feel like they were out. And so what we've offered up is a note in here that the committee members can select people to serve a- as necessary. So like on a subcommittee, right? So for example, if we, if this committee decides to have a communications subcommittee, they can bring people from phase one to continue that work, right? Or if there's a decision to have a finance subcommittee, they can ask people from phase one to come work on those subcommittees. So there's still um, an expectation that many of our phase one um, participants hopefully would want to continue on in the process. All right. Are there any questions? Like no discussion, but questions on what I just went over?
Yeah.
Just as a clarification point for anyone who's watching the two phases very closely. Um, we did have a five-person board on the S-BAC phase one building leadership team. The reason it is down to four is because I have moved from um, into the school board seat. So um, that leadership team is down to four in this document.
Thank you. All right. So we'll take a pause now. And is there anybody wishing to make public comment?
Jim Pritchard, Maple Lab. I have a concern with the way the committee is being formed. I think that we're slipping back into the previous model that was rejected. I, my suspicious part of my brain is saying that the elected officials may have one of the projects in mind. Um, and that is turning people off. Since this came out, I've had about fifteen calls about the concept. And they were not good. Comments like, we told you what was going to happen. They led you to believe that they are open and everything. Put the committee to work. In the background, they were working on other projects. And after I saw the numbers and who was sitting on it, I was leaning toward them being right. I will ask the elected officials from both this body and the council what they asked me to do in phase one. Keep an open mind and follow the data. For those of you that were at that, notice that I sat up front most of the time. I do that to watch people. And I, through some of the conversations, I watched the elected officials. Their facial expression, the way they were moving in their seats and everything. They did not approve of what, what was going on. That's what I mean about being careful to going back to the old uh, consolidated school panel. So I'll ask this panel and I will be asking the council the same thing. Keep an open mind. Follow the data. Uh, I'm concerned about the wording as far as the public's participation. The wording is a little confusing. As I read this, and I've only read it twice, I haven't studied it. I'm reading that the only time that the public can participate are on the four uh, dates that's in this process. I hope we're going to follow the same procedure that we did in phase one, where it will be zoomed and there will be a period for public comment either before or after the meetings. It's not clear in this document that that's going to be permitted. On deliverables, I would like to see the wording changed on semi-permanent modulators to add permanent precast concrete modules. And change the wording from permanent construction to conventional construction. They have the three options. The prefab, the precast, a permanent precast modules and conventional construction. I, I've heard through all the conversations I've had, when we speak about the permanent precast, they are referring to the modules we currently have. And they're completely different. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Nice. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close it. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of the school building advisory committee phase two charge?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
So we are going to, I put a, a suggestion and we are going to change the, the the modular construction, like prefab construction versus either conventional or traditional or I, I don't, I don't know what the best word is.
Yeah, I th- um, we can offer up an amendment. Um, I just don't want to do that right now.
Okay.
Unless some will, well, I, I shouldn't say that. If we, would you like to offer an amendment or do you want to wait till maybe we have a whole list?
Uh, a whole list of amendments?
It sounds like we might have a couple potential amendments to discuss.
Okay, uh, I, I.
I guess we could, a, a point of information, we can vote. I, I guess if she brings up one amendment to change the wording and then there's another amended amendment later, we would vote on it a second time?
No, 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 your amendment.
Right, like how?
Yeah.
So we need to bundle them.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So um, the first is the semi-permanent modular um, language under number three. Um, under, I'm sorry, under deliverables number three. So changing that to um, changing that name.
Well, I think if you look at the text that follows the heading, it, it uses the language prefab modular. And so it seems to me that it would make sense to use that language consistently.
Right.
Okay. And, and also to change the, the next wording of um, permanent to conventional.
Yeah, to conventional construction.
Yeah, whatever, whatever verbiage we want to use for, for both of those so that they're equal.
Okay, um. Okay, so we do that. The other thing is the um, public involvement piece. Um, I'm trying to think about what was just said. Um, I, I think we definitely have the Zoom piece down. Because that's a number 10, meetings and records. So we, and we definitely spell out that they will follow Robert's rules. What I think we could add under number 10 is um, the expectation of public comment. Because I think that's separate from what the above, which is the public involvement. The public involvement is um, is, I, I see what was said during um, Mr. Pritchard's public comment. The public involvement bullet, the way I understood it, and Alyssa, you and Gillian, correct me if you miss, if you heard something different. I think the idea of that sentence or that paragraph was to make sure the community felt like they were brought along in the process. And so that is separate from what Mr. Pritchard is talking about, which is making sure we involve the public by, in the meetings, right? So I think that we're best, to best incorporate that, if we go down to number 10, which is the last number. Um, we already say the committee shall televise all proceedings and allow for remote participation. I think that we can say the committee shall take public comment at all meetings.
At all meetings, yeah.
And then that would, that would get us there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I might suggest that in that last sentence that states it is expected that the S-BAC two will follow Robert's rules to conduct meetings and proceedings. Perhaps at the end of that sentence, changing that period to a comma and um, including the wording, including public comment. Because public comment is uh, an expected part of Robert's rules.
Mm-hmm.
And so it is not in addition to, but I think by uh, making it more. But I think by making it more explicit in the language, that seems like that would address Mr. Pritchard's concern.
Is there any other concerns, any other questions about any part of the document?
The only thing, the only other thing that I might suggest in that same number 10, if the board's, you know, interested in entertaining my feedback, would be the sentence that says the committee shall televise all proceedings and allow for remote participation. I think that, again, in an effort to clarify that we welcome members of the public to be present, that we don't need to necessarily say, and will allow for remote participation. Should we also say, "and in person," just to be more explicit, right? Because I don't want to leave an impression for a member of the public that if you're interested, the only way that you can find out about what this committee is doing is to log on remotely, right? Like, people should be able to be present, you know, just as they are in our public meetings.
All right.
And adding on to that, it, you know, says televised, but, you know, we will also record those. I mean, that is something that always happens. I don't know if we need to spell that out, but.
It says it on there.
Does it?
It is expect, wait, where did it go? Oh, well.
No, it doesn't say that.
Something's happening to the document. Oh, no, no, that's okay. I think it just disappeared, but I think it's back. Okay, hold on. Okay, no, it's not in there. The committee shall televise all proceedings and allow for in-person or remote participation.
Televise and record?
Yeah, televise and record. Okay. Okay. I did want to just talk to the board quickly about the concern about the public participation. And I can understand, we, this is a deviation, right? We did initially make this committee open to all, and we did, I mean, cards on the table, we did really ask the committee to come along and participate and to join us. And so I can understand that the change feels, you know, it can feel concerning, I guess is the right word to use. And it can, it can be, you know, we've asked you to trust us, we've asked you to come along, we've asked you to really believe us, and we say we want the committee, community to participate. And I want to be very clear that this is not, the change in the size doesn't take away from that at all. We still are asking the very same things. We're still asking you to trust us. We're still saying this is a community that is led by the community. The expectation is still for the elected officials not to control this process, not to have their finger on the pulse of it, to really allow the committee to do the work to get to where they need to get to. So none of those expectations have changed at all. The only concern was how do you have a room of 50 people trying to come to a consensus and a decision on a consultant? And how do we have 50 people in the room speaking to a consultant? You can see that it would get really, really overwhelming very, very quickly. And that is, in my mind, really what we were trying to, to control for. Not to control for the community not to participate. All right, if there's no, oh.
All right, so trying to follow this, because I, again, haven't sat on any of the building committees myself. I do different types of committee work typically. I just wanted to get a sense of where some of the comments are coming from and some of the concerns, because I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. And I want to understand what what some of the concerns are. And I'm, as you all know, I'm blunt. And I don't like to, like, imply things. I want things said absolutely plainly, so there's no mistaking what was being said. So is there some concern that the folks that are automatically making it from the Sback One, I don't know how you call yourselves, the Building Committee One, Phase One, to Phase Two? Is there some concern about the folks who are specifically sitting in those seats that are automatically moving over, have some preconceived notion, or are on some team, if there are teams, or have some sort of design that are going to control the process in a way that's going to make it be perceived as unfair to folks in the community? And I'm asking the people who are sat on the committee, because I've never, I've watched those meetings on Zoom. I've attended a couple, but I have not participated to the extent that you have. So is there some concern that we're waiting this committee in some way for some pre-designed outcome?
I think the long and the short of the answer is from the committee, community's perspective. I'm not sure, because I'm hearing the comment the first time that you're hearing it. Right, we're all hearing it for the first time together. I will say that when the first phase was built out, we didn't, we did not tell the subcommittee chairs that they would be leaders moving on to Phase Two. That wasn't an expectation that was laid down to those.
Well, that didn't exist until there was a Phase Two. Yeah, okay.
Right, because we didn't know, right? Like, we had no idea where this. We didn't know if Phase One would, would get to a place where they could come forward with one solution. We didn't know what they would come forward with. And so we really, really tried both times. I sat in the writing of both documents, as did Gillian. And both times, we tried to really not be overly prescriptive. Again, the idea is that we're not putting our finger on the pulse of this, rather the committee is kind of driving the work.
Yeah.
So there was no expectation that those leaders would carry forward. However, they, they were identified as leaders among their peers. And so, you know, that that plays into it. I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't have concern that we are unfairly, I don't personally have concerns that we are unfairly building a committee that strongly favors one solution. I think, like, when I think of these people and who they are, I quite frankly think that the nine of them voted for different solutions. Some of them had different solutions that they recommended, right? I don't think they all, I don't think they all sit toward, I mean, I'm looking to you to see what you think. I don't think they all steer, geared towards one solution.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense if we're, because, again, I'm trying to respond to a concern that we're waiting this committee. My perception, having read the final documents, is that there are four proposals on the table, and it was, I don't think it was unanimous, but it was fairly unanimous to bring all four of those forward. Was he actually unanimous, or not all four of those to our, to us to approve going forward? Because I remember doing that a couple, few meetings ago. So I just want to make sure that if there's a concern that we're, we're voting by placing specific people ahead of time, because that's the only way to shape an outcome that I could be, is to know what someone's already supported, and then put particular people on the committee. And I want to make sure that we're not doing that, because that's not something I'm interested in doing. And I want to make sure that if we're being, if people are concerned that we're doing that, that we're having this discussion, so that they know that that's not the, that's not my intent. And I want to make sure we're not doing it without me knowing, because I don't know. I don't know who brought forward which. I know what the outcome was, I don't know the players on each proposal. I never looked at the people behind the proposals, they weren't, that was not what I was interested in.
Right, sure. I do think that we have kind of a varied support behind all topics. And I think that by using the subcommittee chairs, we're kind of moving forward the subject matter experts.
Okay.
So I think we have kind of a nice mix between utilizing kind of their expertise as the chairs and moving forward people who are open to multiple options, as well as all options being represented.
Okay, so there's representatives who are supportive of all options moving forward?
I don't remember everyone, but I believe off the top of my head, there are some of those. As long as they all choose to, sorry.
As long as they all also choose to come back. My understanding is that we have not had confirmation from all of those people, and.
We can't conscript people.
What's that?
We can't conscript people. This is, there's no compulsory work.
To be fair, none of the work has been done yet, because the bodies haven't voted, right? The council doesn't take this up until Wednesday. And we are setting this up, just to be clear, this is a first reading. We're setting this up to be a first and a second. The town council is setting it up to be the same, so that we have plenty of time for feedback.
Fantastic.
And I should also say that we did, Nick and I did co-write an email and send it out to the entire Phase One committee on Saturday. So they got it at the same time that the board received the information as well. So everybody has had some time to digest with the understanding and the invitation to please come here and to the town council meetings to share feedback as well.
Right, so the people who were in the room, who were sat through those committee meetings, are satisfied that the folks that we are proposing to move forward or they're designing will give a fair shake to all four outcomes? So we get good information?
That's a fair statement.
Well, no, they're going to evaluate all the outcomes that were put forward fairly.
The one, I am not sure that the consolidated school would be represented.
Was that Charlie's idea?
Was he a chair, though?
Well, Charlie was on the leadership team, so he, he comes forward.
Correct, then yes, I feel fairly confident that as long as people move forward, that we would have all four.
So at least one person in the room, because I'm only interested in the four that came out of that. I'm not interested in anything. So the four that came out of the recommendation, at least one person in the room can fairly evaluate that option. I just want to make sure, again, I want to make sure that if people are concerned that we're not considering particular options, that we're putting at least one person in that room at that table with a vote to be able to advocate for a position. And I hope they also keep open minds, and that they can winnow these down, because if we're not voting on four separate projects, we need to get this down to something that's manageable. But I want to make sure that there's no concern. I'm hearing a concern that we are somehow not open-minded and we're not evaluating things. So the only thing that I can do, and this is my wheelhouse, is process procedures, and make sure that if we have a fair procedure, that every one of the projects gets evaluated fairly as a, you know, as a proposal, and then we get to the best proposal that way. But if you're, if you're confident that we're putting at least one person in the room who can talk about each proposal, then I don't know what else we can do to make the process more fair. And I, that's what I'm invested in. I want a fair process that we get to a good outcome.
I think, I think, I think what I'm hearing is instead of it being the, instead of it being the subcommittee leaders, it's the ideas, the idea generators.
But.
Because I can't confirm that voting, if you recall, the way that the voting worked and the way that that committee dis, it was a post-it note on a poster board.
Yeah.
I have no way of knowing if the five leaders on the, the subcommittee chairs, what they voted for. I have no way of knowing, right? I have no way of knowing what their interest is and what they served on. I can't answer that.
I don't care if we have the person who came up with the idea on the committee. What I do care about is that if we are advancing four ideas, we need to have at least one person in that room who supports each one of those ideas.
Right.
To be able to have an actual discussion about the four ideas. If we're actually advancing four of them, then all four of them have to be represented. If we're only, you know, or else we are waiting this. Because if we're not putting people in the room who care about that particular idea, then we're not putting people in that room who are going to have a fair discussion and evaluate all these proposals. And we are tasked, our, the recommendation that I heard was to consider all four of these. And so that's what this committee has to be able to do.
Right.
And I do believe in our discussions, we had discussed that. And we did not say specifically a representative from each group, per se, but had put thought into, okay, you know, this person from the leadership team was a representative from that idea. And, oh, this person is a representative and was the subcommittee chair of infrastructure and things like that, but.
Yeah, because we would, again, we would have no way of knowing, like, where people's interests lie, because we didn't, we didn't ask people to hands up and down vote.
But we did still, I mean, unless someone totally turned on their own group. We did see who sat where in the last section of the time period when people were working on their proposals.
I don't, I can't confidently say that. What I can confidently say is I know of one person who brought forth one of the ideas that is sitting here. That I only know of one. From what Freyla's getting at, I can only confidently say one. And that's Charlie, because it was his idea. This is, the consolidated school was Charlie in April.
And so James is on the board, on the leadership team, so would be progressed forward. He was the.
He had the one idea?
He had the idea of the fourth school.
Okay.
Or he was on that committee, at least, I don't know.
He was the idea, he was one of the heads that merged two starting ideas into one of the larger ideas.
Perfect.
The group, all right, now, so then.
Well, we had the finance committee.
Taking a step back, this is first reading to second reading. So like, for, as a first reading, I'm throwing sticky wickets everywhere, because this is what I care about. I'm not opposed to advancing this document. But I cannot support a document at the end unless there's a perception that it fairly will evaluate the process. Because like I said, I have not grabbed on to people and ideas. I just saw the four ideas, and if we want to make sure that every idea is evaluated fairly, we need to make sure that every idea has somebody in that room who's at least willing to give it a fair evaluation. And I hope they're willing to change their minds, because we're not voting on four different projects ultimately. We have to have people willing to evolve down into a more manageable number of ideas.
Well, we're hiring a consultant, like the, this committee will pick a consultant that will have to wade through all of those options and lay out like a, like a real information. You know, this committee worked really, really, really hard, and they were amazing. But even they said, we, we're not the professionals here, we need a professional. And so I think some of these ideas may even evolve, I, in the process of this, with the consultant, so I.
All I have to say is that somebody at the table has to be able to fairly, if we know that, if we send everybody in that room who's going to support whichever idea they support, it doesn't matter which one, four schools, the precast modulators, you know, we have a lot of really great creative ideas. But if we send everybody in that room who we know really likes, pick whichever one, I'm not going to say one, because I don't have, I don't, I don't have one that I'm supporting right now. But whichever one, if we send, if we send 10 people into a committee of 19 that all we know are going to vote for this, then we are doing what, what people are concerned about. We're waiting this committee to have a pre-designed outcome. I'm not interested in that. And the only way that I can ensure that there's a fair process and that every idea is evaluated fairly before we get to the next stop is to make sure that every idea has a representative in that room.
Can we add an addendum to that, you know, with the, the makeup of, of the five, four, and three, we, that involved in that somewhere is somebody from.
I would not be comfortable doing that today, because I don't, I think we have enough information, from what I'm hearing. But I think before second reading, that's a question that I would like to have more information about and more. I would like to be satisfied that people who look at this committee believe that they actually can fairly evaluate the projects.
So I, I think it's challenging, because walk me through the process as well as we're vetting this out. Without a document, it's challenging to go to some of these committee head, committee chair, subcommittee chairs, and say, "Are you, are you in?" And count them in until we have a working document. But how do we know who's going to sit with us to make sure all four projects are representative if we can't sign people on truly? So I completely agree that all four absolutely need someone in the room to give it a fair shake, to speak to it. When the, when the consultant says X, they can speak to that, what it specifically speaks to. I couldn't agree more that all of the projects need to be represented and well-represented by the people who started, started the idea from the ground. I just don't know how to ensure that can happen in a process where we're like, building the document. we're like building the document while unable to talk to people directly about it, I guess.
Can I go back to the suggestion that I had earlier? What if we add four members to the leadership, to this group? The four members being the four idea generators.
I'm completely.
That would satisfy me, because I think the generator is the probably at least one of the better advocates for it. The person who can at least say, this is why I thought this idea was good. And ultimately, if they can be convinced that another idea is better, is the best person to go out and say, here's why this idea is better.
I, I do think the one caveat is, I believe we may have gotten a few emails already from idea generators who have chosen to self-dismiss themselves from wanting to be in too. So as long as it said.
Or designee.
Or designee.
Or designee, then I would, I would be comfortable adding them.
I just don't want to turn around at the end of this project and have somebody come forward and say, but you didn't fairly evaluate this, this, this project, because you didn't put someone in the room who cared about it. I want to be able to say, we did. I, I mean, I'm trying to make, I care about this process being fair. That's my biggest interest right now.
Freyla, the other, sorry, the other point that I would just make, you know, again, as an observer to most of the process or a resource provider to the team during that phase of the work is that as we were nearing completion of the work, each member voted to endorse their top two projects.
Good member.
So, you know, it, it wasn't that there was an expectation, you know, that a member had to commit to one of four projects. And I think that I also heard Jillian mention a few minutes ago that i- if you look at each of the projects on its own, there are a lot of nuances that are not necessarily that unrelated amongst the projects. You know, so, so we're not necessarily talking about four discrete projects that are so completely different.
That's true, that's true. I, I agree with that. I just don't want anybody at the end of this process to say, you didn't think about making it as fair as possible. That is, again, that is my, that's the only thing that I'm invested in at this moment is a process that is object, that is objectively fair and that is perceived as objectively fair. And I care about both of those things.
Yeah, I mean, we can't really afford to keep at this time-wise.
Correct.
This is, I mean, I'm already.
I'm comfortable supporting this document, but I will not support a document at the end if I don't think that it's, it is perceived as being a failed process. And I think it's going to be fair, because I think, I do believe, I believe people do what they say they're going to do and they join. I don't believe people join committees with ill intent. And I'm going to ascribe good intent to people. And hope that people who join this committee are invested in making sure we have the best solution for our kids, because I believe that's why they join the committee. But I want to also be like objectively, in, in, if, in November 2025, I'm outside a polling station with a sign or something, like not right, you know, without 300 yards away, but advocating for this position. I want to be able to say to the person who's like, this wasn't fair, you didn't consider this, nobody. I want to be able to say, I did everything I could. I did everything I could to make this process as fair, as transparent, and as inclusive as many ideas as possible. Because that was one of the big critiques that I heard last time. And I, I'm not, I, I do, I care what people think. Not because of that, but because it's, because what I do know is that this project is not going to be successful unless the community does feel like it's fair and that we did consider everything. And so the best thing that I can do at this point is, in addition to keeping an open mind and following it, which I am doing, is to also ensure that I, the only, the only thing that, the thing I bring to this table is governance. Like, it's like my strength, right? And is make sure that I can make this process as fair as I can make it. And I know we don't have time and we're rushing, but I don't want to rush and, and stumble, because we don't have the power to get to the end.
Hannah, can I make a suggestion?
Unfortunately, no. I'm sorry, we can, we can, I can talk to you afterwards for sure about it. So just hang on, hold that thought for me. Okay, so I think, okay, so where we're at right now, we have a change in the language about the semi-permanent modulars. We're going to, oops.
Can we go to precast modulars? Because I think there's an issue with prefab modulars. I think there's a difference between precast and prefab.
I think we did get an email about the specific wording as well.
I, I think that we could go with factory-constructed versus conventional, because regardless of, there's multiple different methods.
Correct.
Oh, that is true, there is multiple different methods. So, okay, factory-constructed modulars? And then, what did he say?
On-site, off-site, construction.
Oh, that's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, there we go, yeah.
Okay, so let's, say that one more time.
Off-site construction versus on-site construction. So you're really looking at the construction mode as your C there or three? And then.
Could we, could.
So would the title, hold on one second, Jillian, would the title be off-site versus on-site constructed?
I would do construction mode, but.
Could, could we just do various construction modes? Like versus, you know, you know, considering various construction modes versus all this prescriptive.
Off-site, on-site.
Yeah.
So you're not even limited to those two.
Right, right.
Okay, consider various construction modes, like off-site or on-site? Is that what you said?
Or versus, or however you want to do it.
On-site construction, yep.
Or on-site construction. Okay. Okay. Consider various construction, or are we assessing the pros and the cons of construction, of various construction? Is that really what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Great, that was great.
We don't want to scroll up.
I know, I'm going to just delete it. Okay. All right. So it would be, "Construction Modes" would be the title. Assess the pros and cons of various construction mo- modes, like off-site or on-site construction? Is that? Describe it well. Okay, so we have that at it. And just so everyone knows what we'll do with this, we'll vote on this tonight. I will, I'm going to share the public comment we received tonight and then our suggested changes with town council, with Councilor McGee. And he'll be able to then have this conversation with the council on Wednesday. So we have that change. We have the membership change, which adds four members. I'm calling them, I, I think this is likely the best phrasing, but if not, I'm happy to change it. Four members of the SBAC Phase One Solutions Subcommittee Chairs, or their designee.
I think that suffices.
Is that good? Yeah. Okay, so we have that change. And then down at the bottom, number 10, for meeting and records, we've added, "The committee shall televise and record all proceedings and allow for in-person or remote participation." And then it is expected that the SBAC will follow Robert's rules to conduct meetings and proceedings, including public comment. Oh, and quorum is changed. Can someone do the calculation for me quickly? Because the quorum will change.
13.
Thank you.
Shannon, I think you also meant to put in that you would record also, televise and record?
Yeah, that's in there, televise and record all proceedings.
But the three alternates don't vote. So now you're at 20, so it would be 11. The alternates only vote if one of the standing members is absent.
But if we just added four people that aren't alternates, then our number for official numbers, 23, 23, and for our quorum would be 12.
Well, we're adding 20.
If you back out the three, then you're at 20.
What three did we remove?
Well, the alternates don't vote unless one of the members is absent.
Yeah, so it wasn't, okay.
So it would be 11?
This is why I don't math either. 11 is quorum? Okay. Okay, so we have 11 members for quorum. So that would be the other chair. Okay, is there any other discussion? Are you verifying?
Where did we land on quorum?
Quorum?
11.
Don't ask me, because I don't math.
11.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. Is there any other discussion? All right, so we have a first, second discussion. All in favor of approving the first reading of the School Building Advisory Committee Phase Two Charge as we have edited.
Point of order?
Yes.
So this is just going to approve what we've just done?
So the, this, this vote will just move forward the document in order for a second read in a few weeks. No changes. And when we refer to it in two weeks, it will obtain whatever changes the town has as well? Or the town will consider the ones the town makes at that point?
Yes.
If they vote down any of the things that we have added?
Then it'll come, it'll come back. It'll come back as town council has voted as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Point of order, do we need a motion to amend the document? Or do we not?
No, I think we're okay to just say, as, as, as amended, as we've amended tonight. Because this is the first read, this is just the first read. Do you concur?
Yes.
All right, so all in favor of approving the first reading of the School Building Advisory Committee Phase Two Charge as amended tonight? Oh, it's unanimous. I couldn't land on the word. Thank you. All right, 11.3 is appointments. I'm going to do two of them separately in one group I'll bundle. So the first one is 11.3.1, the Wentworth School Assistant Principal.
Yes, I'm really excited this evening to share with you this nomination and bring this forward to you. Gabrielle La Perriere, who's seated next to Kelly Crosby this evening, for those of you in the room, has been selected to fill this position due to a resignation. Ms. La Perriere earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in political science with a minor in education from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and her Master of Science degree in educational leadership from the University of Maine at Farmington. She began teaching first grade in Charlotte, North Carolina, before moving back to Maine to continue teaching first grade at Lisbon Community School. Ms. La Perriere has worked as an assistant principal in RSU 40, as an interim assistant principal in the Brunswick School Department, and most recently, as principal at Dresden Elementary School. We are very excited to nominate Gabrielle this evening and have her assume that leadership role at Wentworth School.
Perfect. Do I have any discussion? Would you like to come up? You're welcome to come up.
I don't have too much to say, other than I'm just super appreciative for the opportunity to join the community here at Scarborough. And I look forward to learning from Kelly and my other colleagues, as well as the staff at Wentworth, and get to know, of course, the students and the families as well. So, thank you again for your time and consideration during this process, and thank you to the interview committee, too.
Thank you very much. All right, do I have a motion to approve the Wentworth School Assistant Principal?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, wait, well, I'm point of order. I need to know who said first.
I did.
She, she beat him.
No, she didn't. She never, no one will ever.
No, I seriously need to know. And who's second, I'm sorry.
I don't even know who's second.
Second?
Jenna. Jenna, Jenna, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion?
I hope I don't get any phone calls for, from you when my kids come to you guys.
Congrats. Those of us with strong-willed children have to leave these caveats when we're, when we're in our board meetings. Yes, here we are. All right, any other, any other discussion? Welcome and congratulations.
Did you vote?
No, we're about to right now. All in favor of approving the Wentworth School Assistant Principal as presented? Perfect, it is unanimous. Thank you and congratulations again. Thank you for joining us. All right, I'm going to bundle 11.3.1, the Wentworth School, no, 11.3.2, the Pleasant Hills School Special Education Teacher, 11.3.3, the Eight Corners School Kindergarten Teacher, 11.3.4, the Eight Corners School Grade One Teacher, 11.3.5, the Wentworth School Resource Room Teacher, and 11.3.6, the Blue Point School Grade One Teacher, and 11.3.7, the Blue Point Special Education Teacher. I want to bundle them. And is there a motion to approve those hires as presented in our packet?
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of hiring? Thank you, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, 11.3.8 is the Fall Coaches. This is the added Fall Coach roster that is in our materials. Is there anything else to add to the? Do I have a motion to approve the Fall 2024 Coaches roster as presented in our materials?
I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? All right, it's unanimous, thank you. And if there are no objections, I will, 12.0 is adjournment. If there's no objections, I will adjourn at 8:45 PM.
So I'll move.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.